To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have an amended agenda, so the first item would be approval of the official school board minutes from the regular meeting of April 9th. We'd like to have a motion to accept that.
Motion to approve.
Mrs. Rack, second. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, the consent agenda. We will have a reading of the consent items by Dr. Vagwell. Afterwards, if any board member would like to remove any of those items, please indicate, and then we will vote on the consent agenda. Dr. Vagwell.
Under Business Affairs, Item 2, Consider Authorizing Requests From St. Mary Community Action to Approve the Summer Feeding Program at St. Mary Alternative Program Site, Rain Tree Elementary School, Hattie Watts Elementary School, and Morgan City Junior High School. Item 3, Approve Updated Job Descriptions for Behavioral Support, Computer Technician 1, 2, and 3, Computer Software Technician, Coordinator of Special and Related Services, Custodian 1, 2, and 3, Head Custodian, Maintenance Grade 3, 4, 5, and 6, Maintenance Foreman, Planner, Warehouse Foreman, Electrical Technician, HVAC Technician, Supervisor of Maintenance, Receptionist, Switchboard, Clerk Typist 1 and 2, Account Clerk 1 and 2, Account Clerk 3, Federal Programs, Account Clerk 3, Newly Created, which just means it was composed for the first time, Administrative Assistant, Executive Assistant, Educational Diagnostician, IEP Interventionist, School Food Service Technician, School Food Service Cafeteria Manager, Supervisor Child Nutrition Program, School Secretary, Newly Created, Special Education Gifted and Talented Liaison, School Social Worker, School Psychologist. Item 4, Approve Certification of Board Meeting Pursuant to Proclamation During COVID-19. And that concludes the consent agenda.
All right, what are the...
Move to approve the consent agenda?
All right, we have a motion to accept the consent agenda by Mr. Alfred, second by Mrs. Lockett. Discussion?
Yes, I'd like to abstain from voting on Number 2.
On Number 2, okay. All right. Would you want... but... Okay, you just want to abstain from it. All right. Any other comments?
Which one did Ms. Rack pull?
Number 2. Is she pulling it?
Did you want to pull it to discuss it?
Uh-uh, no, just abstain.
Okay, that's fine. Just she wants to go on record abstaining for Number 2. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes, thank you. All right, next, we'll move on to Business Affairs. Discuss and take action appropriate regarding an expansion of service options for Tesh Action Clinic operating at BE Boudreaux Middle School, West St. Mary High School. Mr. Wilks, Dr. Wilk, excuse me.
How you doing?
Good day.
You can hear me. All right. Got the N95 version on. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for having us. First I want to wish all the teachers, Teachers Appreciation Week. As I have to remind my wife all the time, the Latin translation for doctor is teacher, so send them myself in that group. And as you all know, this is Nurses Appreciation Week also, so we already wish them our wishes. You should have in front of you or provided to you a presentation. With the purpose of presenting to you tonight is that we are currently serving, as you all know, Rain Tree Elementary, Beeman Road Boudreaux, and West St. Mary High School. And if you look at one of the slides, it'll show you that currently we're serving 530 users out of Beeman Road Boudreaux, West St. Mary, and out of Rain Tree, 347 active users.
Excuse me, we don't have those slides. Right.
Oh, okay. And as you know, we've been serving, serving Beeman Road Boudreaux and West St. Mary for over 10 years now, and Rain Tree the last two years. So we're serving right now 877 students out of those schools. And since the pandemic has begun, as you know, there's been an interruption of services. And what we've done is outreach to those. We're in the process of actively outreaching to those students that we've followed for those years. And as you know, the services that we provide include behavioral health services as well as comprehensive medical services. And what our staff has done, I want to commend Latonya Harrison, who's passing that out, and Paulette Lofton, our COO. What they've done is created an initiative called the Wellness Check-In Initiative, where they've been contacting all the parents and students to assess their needs and what they're going through right now, and to make sure that they are, those needs are being addressed in this time through actively making appointments through telehealth and those that need face-to-face visits. But in the, in the process of doing this wellness visits, they're asking them a series of eight questions. The questions that they're asking them pertain to rating on a scale of 1 to 5, with 1 being no problem to 5, and I'm experiencing some difficulty, the following: their health insurance status, their healthcare specialist service, primary care services, and behavioral health, and medication needs. Also, their, if they're experiencing any emotional problems. And then the demographics as stated. So far, they've contacted about 130 parents and students out of the 877 that we're serving. And they've been finding that there've been a lot of concerns regarding anxiety. There's something called the COVID kids, where kids are experiencing sadness, as you can imagine. And of course, concerns about closing the learning gap and behavioral plan, planning. Some of the services that we provide on our primary care site are medication refills, diagnosis and treatment of illness, injury, COVID-19 education, and monitoring. So far, this has been well received and has generated 45 behavioral health follow-up visits, 60 primary care visits, three dental visits. And in identifying some of the needs that are listed, it's our hope that as we continue to work that list from Rain Tree, Beeman Road Boudreaux, West St. Mary, as we identify that we can connect them to the appropriate resources that they need. So the ask tonight is that if we can follow through on what we had decided from our school board advisory committee that we've been talking about for the last several years, it was our intent, had this not happened, to expand the services that we're offering at those schools. As you know, we're open right now to anyone that wants to come and see us on that campus, they can, from the other schools and the parish. But we'd like to extend the services that we are providing and do this wellness initiative, check-in initiative, to the students at Franklin Senior High, Franklin Junior High, Hattie Watts, Patterson Senior High, Patterson Junior High, and JS Oakway, who were listed and prioritized by our committee as we've been meeting for the last several years. The intent, of course, is to make this available to everyone in the parish, but in trying to prioritize, we have the mobile unit as part of our strategy, and we have been working with the different schools to get that in place until this happened. So that is the ask, that we expand access to services to the students at these other institutions that we're now providing to Rain Tree, Beeman Road Boudreaux, and West St. Mary. I think the need is even greater and it's more acute. And anything that we can do to help support the work that you all are doing and connect these, keep these students connected, we really don't know what's going to happen moving forward, so we'd like to make sure that there aren't any gaps in care. A lot of the students that we've been serving historically have been getting treatment, and some of them are going to be needing medication refills. Some of them would need counseling, as well as the other things that I mentioned. So I'll open the floor to any questions that you might have regarding the request.
Are there any questions from the board? Mrs. Rack? Oh, yes. Ms. LaSalle?
I would like to know if there was cost to kids here or cost to school for these services or cost giving by the law, law, the agency, the law, the bank?
Right. No, we don't charge, we don't charge any cost to students. If they have insurance that's billable, then we will do that, like we've been doing for the last 10 years. But no one's ever turned away services because of inability to pay.
I'm excited. I'm gonna tell you, in hearing this, when you were here before and you talked about West St. Mary and BEB and Rain Tree, and I've been knowing this for some time about West St. Mary and BEB, and then Rain Tree, and I really wanted in this area. And then for you to come today, I'm excited because all, of course, I'm sure, I'm just doing a lot of talking, because I'm sure everybody is going to be excited about this. If not excited, know about the need and how this can help the kids. And to expand, extend this program to all of these areas, you all are to be commended. And I really thank you all for that. I can see nothing but good coming out of this for the kids' sake. Thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Mr. Delott?
A quick question. Does this infringe on any instructional time?
As it exists right now, you mean? What instructional time are you referring to?
I'm talking about the kids in school required for so many classes, so many hours.
You're not in school right now.
Or the instructional time?
I'm a little confused. Is there...
Doing regular, regular times, when normal times are here. When times are normal and without these pandemic stuff he's talking about.
You mean like we've been doing for the last 11 years, when we called them out during PE and we arranged it with the principals? And I think if you got the report from Dr. White, he contributed, attributed the success of moving from a D to a B+ because of the interventions that we've done. So no, we don't disrupt anything. We work in conjunction with the principals and teachers, so there's no disruption in the services.
I have a question.
Teaching in time.
Mr. Verret?
My, my question is, I think the gist is you want to expand the services you're presently offering to additional children.
Correct.
You need more space at the site you're presently occupying.
No, what we're gonna do is call them. We call them on the phone, do the questionnaire, assess their, their needs, and then provide either telemedicine visits where we can do it, as you all know, that's what we're doing now in the light of the pandemic because of face-to-face. Those that need face-to-face, we can arrange those. But the behavioral health, the telepsych visits or the telemental health visits are almost all done through telephonic communication right now.
All right, my, my second question is, do you have or will you have to have access to what we consider a high degree confidential, that makes you like what we call JPAM, self about the child, his family, his life academically? Or we consider that very, very, very private. You don't have access to that, do you?
We have access to JPAM right now. We've had it since we've had the relationship with the consent forms that we've signed legally, that we have access to JPAM. That's what we've been using for Rain Tree, Beeman Road Boudreaux, and West St. Mary.
Yeah, the only information that we access is the parent's name and the phone number and the child's name and the grade.
Right.
You have nothing to do with IQ, his history, his form of behaviors, and...
No, sir, it's the information from the child or the parent.
Right, it's contact information.
Very confidential, and it's not to get out. Okay, I have another.
Well, being in the medical profession and well-versed in HIPAA and joint commission accredited, we, we've never been sighted for any breaches of private protected health information. I can assure you that.
Dr. White, I'm, I'm a little confused. So is your clinic open right now at the school?
We have our staff available there.
But are you seeing patients there while school is closed?
We've never closed down. We had the temporary shutdown, but there have been some patients that have presented that we couldn't provide the services through tele, telemedicine.
All right. During a normal times and schools in session, and a parent from Patterson goes to your clinic there, how does that work? How do they...
If they've signed a consent, we can accommodate them and see them.
Do they have to go through the front office and be sent back there?
They stop at the, there's a gate, as you know, at West St. Mary. Our clinic is located when you come in on the campus off to the left.
Okay, so I'm not sure what you need from us. You've got a clinic in Franklin on what street? Willow? Is it Willow? Your, your Tesh Action Clinic?
Uh-huh.
I mean, if you're not seeing the students, I don't know what you need from us. I mean, or is it just so you can try and solicit these kids to come to your clinic? I'm, I'm not sure what you need from us. I'm, I'm not sure what you need. I mean, you want access to be able to have.
I'm insulting to say that I'm soliciting.
Well.
We've never solicited in our lives.
You're, you're.
And I take that as an insult.
I apologize.
Number two is, we don't solicit anyone. And what we're doing is trying to make access to these students in a time of need.
But your clinic is calling these parents and asking them these questions.
To ask them if they have these. These are already existing patients like we do with all the patients we see. Then we've been testing, I don't know if you've been following the news, if you haven't, let me enlighten you, that we've been making ourselves available. When there was outbreak of active TB, we stepped up and went and tested a hundred and twenty kids on our own dime, didn't ask for anything because it was a need in the community. If you don't think there's a need in the community for these kids that have poor economic resources, that are uninsured, that are getting free lunch because of their economic needs, then that's your opinion and you could vote that way. I'm saying the need is there. We're offering ourselves to you as a resource. We're not trying to solicit. I want the record to be clear for that insulting language. We're not soliciting anyone. This is a free country. This is America. If you consent and you want a good treatment and we're making access available, then it's up to those students and those parents to do so.
But why, why do you need the, the students?
Because your legal advisor, advisors and your superintendent said we had to come and present to you tonight what our plans were so you wouldn't see or read about it and say, why is Test Action Clinic doing what they're doing?
I understand that. But I'm, I'm wondering, are you only asking for the kids from these schools that you've seen at your clinic?
I think I made myself clear when I presented.
I misunderstood you then. Can you re-explain that?
I just told you and you have the, the slides. We serve eight hundred and seventy-seven kids. You want to break it down for you again. So we serve Rain Tree Elementary, we serve Bevanot Boudro and West St. Mary. Okay, you know where they're located. You know what that, that schools are. A lot of people have visited those. But that's where we've been for the last eleven years. Okay, now we're serving those students. And the advisory committee that's been meeting regularly is now coming to you all to say that we're gonna put an implementation to make an increased access to the other schools that were on our calendar to be expanded to all along. We've talked to the folks and we've had, at Patterson, when they were doing the renovations, we had the hookup setup that we can bring the mobile unit that we have to that site. These are all things that have been in the works for years. Now that we're, that it's crisis, we're just making it even more available because of the need.
But a, a parent from a student at one of these schools or any school can go to your clinic and contact you there if they see that they have the need for this, correct?
We've, we've always been open to everyone.
Okay, all right, all right. Thank you.
Can I just add to it? What, what our ask is, because we are at BEB, we're at West St. Mary, we're at Rain Tree, we want to expand to these schools that we currently do not have access to the demographics. We're asking for demographics only. Right now, we only have access to the three schools that we're on their, physically on their campus. What we want you to do and to approve is to give us access to those schools we have listed because right now we don't even have the demographics. And so Dr. Badwin said in order for her to be able to give us access to those, just like we have the others, we had to come before you tonight to get permission to be able, for her to give us access to those schools.
Mrs. Lockett?
Yeah, the resident saying that some people do not have transportation.
Absolutely.
And therefore those kids that you see, you would not, might not see because they don't have transportation to get to the clinic on Webber Street.
That's correct. Mr. Park?
On this, is there any consideration for the schools that are not included on this? Because I represent the East End and we have four people there too, like she just said, that can't go in a place. So what do we do about them?
I just told you, we're open to everyone. And that we can't take care of everyone all at once. This was thought well out as a strategic plan that we did several years ago when Mr. Lockett was alive and well and an active member of the advisory committee. And this is the, the, this is what you all told us the need was as we did progression-wise.
Okay, but my question, next one.
Now, if they want to, yes, they, we'd love to.
But how do they?
If you want to give us access to all the schools, let me go on record and say we'll be happy to, to certainly make ourselves available.
Well, without it being actually made available right now, I understand anybody can go. How do the people, let's say in Morgan City area, know that this is available to them?
We advertise on this gentleman's radio program. We advertise on the breeze. We advertise on test, I'm telling you, I'm asking, I'm telling you. We advertise on your website, your website. So the information's out there. This is more personal contact, you know? And I think this is the most effective means, it's direct communication. When you can call someone and ask them their needs.
May I have your job notes?
That'll be good. Go ahead.
Let me get this understanding here. I'd like to say this. You've had this at West St. Mary and BEB for eleven years?
Yes.
And it has worked well? And we.
I go beyond that and say, Latonya can tell in the statewide report that, that those two clinics, the clinic we have there has been recognized as the most productive clinic in the state.
Right, and.
It would be nice if the school board appreciated what you have.
Right, and, and certainly I have been, I've wanted this to come this way for some time. And I've even said that at the last time that you were here. And so if there is, you're trying to find out if there is a need
Yes, fair.
for these kids. If there is not a need, then you're gonna find that out from the conversation with the parent. You're not telling the parent that they have to do this or have to do that. You're only trying to supply those where there is a need.
We wouldn't have ever got funded if there wasn't ever a need.
So it's just about those with needs?
Right.
Okay.
So we get a small old little portion from the state. The rest of it's always been on us to, to provide these services.
Okay.
Mrs. LaSalle? I got you next.
You are, the time that we have the discussion. I have a concern about the safety part of it because it brings people on the campus. And we're currently trying to limit those people that come on Patterson to control. That, that, even though I appreciate the fact that you are giving those kids medical attention, I am concerned about the safety part of it. Not because of the kids, simply because the family of the kids can get services on the campus too. Am I correct?
As a physician, as a doctor, my first concern is safety.
Yeah, I understand that.
So your concern, I think my concern would, I'm not supposed to see what your concern is. That is always our first, we would never do anything to put anyone at risk. You know, we're in conjunction right now with almost the public health. I just got a call from the government's task force on health equity and, and transmission. So, you know, I don't think anyone could have more appreciation of risk of safety than we do. We are joint commission accredited. Everything we do has to be approved by the gold standard of safety. So I hope that all those any concerns you have.
You didn't, but, but didn't negate the concern by stating all your accolades. I appreciate that.
It's not accolades, in fact, it's a certification.
Well, of course, certifications. But anyway, I don't think you are as concerned about.
You don't think I'm concerned?
Why do you make this up? Of course, we're talking, we ask you questions.
But you can see it. I don't think that you are concerned. That's, that's a misstatement, mischaracterization.
I understand this meaning, well, of course, yeah. I am concerned about the fact that we, we're the ones that have to deal with the school safety issue.
We do too.
I know that you understand some school safety or safety period, but not, we are concerned about school safety. Anybody that comes on the campus.
Correct.
And that is a concern of the school board because.
So if you would talk to the principals who are the primary safety vehicle, that's why we've done all the things we've done historically, working with Dr. White, you remember him? And Doctors, and then Mrs. Sanders on those campuses. Nothing we do is without the principal's consent and then number one concern.
And, and that, my actual next point was.
Okay.
Before we, before I feel like if we can bring it to the East End, to the Hattie Watts and Patterson, I, I just need to know if the, the community is okay with that.
Ma'am, let me interrupt you. I think maybe there was a misunderstanding. If I could direct you to patient reception. The Wellness Check-In Initiative is a telehealth effort, which means that all of the sessions are conducted via telehealth. The only students that are coming on the campus, when we're still there, are those that have diabetes, that need their labs, that need to be checked, those are the only students that come for that because we can't do that via telehealth. That's why the School Based Health Center is not open now just for two days a week. Two days a week because we were concerned about those students. You can't do that over the, over telehealth. So they have to come in. And a lot of these students, we found, their, their blood sugar levels were elevated because their sugars were not being checked. And so now the providers are coming back in and providing those services. Those are the only individuals that are coming in twice a week. This initiative is a telehealth initiative and it's in direct response to COVID-19 and the school closures. I would also encourage you, ma'am.
Thanks, Coach. I see that.
To go to the statistical page, all of the information is recently out about what's happening to students that are at home. Seventy percent of the students are losing their reading skills because they're at home. This is just brand new information that's out. Fifty percent of the students are losing their mathematics skills. A lot of students are experiencing less new nocturnal COVID, um, COVID anxiety, as Dr. Wilson explained. And so we're addressing those issues. Also, what we're finding through the research is a lot of parents are only around. They need the services too. So our health provider is providing services via telehealth to the parents because they don't understand how to do the distant learning. They don't understand how to manage working from home and having kids there. There is a need too. So the services are born beyond just the children. And this is what we're finding. I encourage you, if you have the time, to please look at the PowerPoint fully. And I think all of your questions will be addressed.
I'll, I'll, I've probably liked seeing this before, but Mr. Taylor, can I ask you a quick question?
In a second.
Is this, is this, so you're talking about two days a week? Is all of this temporarily until this is over or over, like until school starts? Or is this going on as a permanent basis?
You can address it to me. I'll take it. It's, it's because if the need exists, we will fill the need.
But you're not telling us whether this is gonna be until August?
You think the need will be, I'll answer you, ask you, and you think the need will end with COVID-19?
Thank you.
Mrs. Pla?
So I just, I just want to clarify a moment, ask some questions. So at these schools, and I'm looking at the page for strategies and activities. So initially, how does this roll out? If everybody, every student enrolled at those schools, they receive a J text or something?
Let me explain it to you, explain to you exactly what we're doing. So for those three schools that we already have access to JPAM, what happened is I sent out a general message to the principals. The principals, they are sending out these messages twice a week. And it all, all it explains is that it's a collaboration between the school board, their school, and Test Action Clinic, and that we will be calling, asking them a couple of questions to see if they would be, um, have a need for the resources that we have there, via behavioral health, medical health, via telehealth. And so that message is sent out first, through text message, and then a call. And then a day later, we call from the list. We have a script. I even have a copy of the script if you would like to see it. And then we introduce to them who we are, what we're doing, and we ask those survey questions. Based on the responses on those surveys, survey questions, that is then put on a resource list. Then based on that resource list, we assign them to a case member, our certified application counselors. They take that need, call that parent, and they give them information about the resources that are available. The number one thing that has been identified is having problems with distant learning and need of laptops, computers, and this is all included in our report. Did I address your concern?
You did. Thank you so much. And also, is there a way for them to opt out now because of the test?
And they don't have to. And only if they indicate they want to move forward with a telehealth visit, do we assign them an appointment. Other than that, if they say, no, I'm not interested, we say, thank you, and we're available, you need help.
LaSalle?
Thank you.
Dr. Williams?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for being here. What's the timeline? The schools y'all had listed up there, that was, that's immediate? If y'all get approval tonight?
Access, we have a team that's, how many of y'all have a current team right now?
We have, I think it's maybe six or seven. That was also a ask as well. If you guys could assign someone to represent your parish or part of our wellness initiative team, then that way you are, you are, you are a gentleman, the gentleman from the school would be represented. Also, you could see as this information is coming in real time, we could be maybe weekly, the wellness team, then you would have firsthand information about what's going on and the needs of the students.
The idea is to collect the data, give you all the information as we discover the needs that are available and try to see, obviously, the resources that you all have there and connect them with the resources that, that they need.
Okay, so.
But yeah, we're ready to get on now.
If we prove it tonight, that those schools y'all listed, that would be immediate. They would be included in y'all program.
Yeah, we'll work our way through the list, yes.
Okay, is there a timeline for the other schools? Would y'all see ahead?
Well, it's.
Or is it, or is it just here right here?
I think what we're experiencing is, is some of them is taking two or three calls when we find that the numbers are disconnected. So we go back and try to reach them. I think we started with, in the first week, we reached about a hundred and thirty.
Because we found the dog lab.
Out of eight seventy-seven. And so, yeah, it's gonna take us a while to work through the list. That's why we have, I think, six or seven. But this is something that I feel that you all would certainly want to embrace because it's assessing at a critical time when folks don't have access, to give them access and try to keep, keep them connected and get them to the resources that they are telling us, telling us that they need. And, and then obviously, you know, what I'm trying to explain to people, there were a lot of needs unmet before this whole pandemic. It's uncovered a lot of glaring disparities. And we're just here as a resource, you know, a third originally source with a lot that we can bring them there.
You mentioned the principals tonight. Can you reiterate? I'll have a few here in a few hours time. The principals, they, they will contact it or will be contacted or?
Yeah, we don't know anything about the principals. Obviously, they're the ones who direct the safety issue and the campus safety and as well as no disruptions to the school, to the, the school hours.
Okay. One question to Dr. Bagwell. Dr. Bagwell, has Nurse Duvall been brought into this discussion?
Yes.
Yes, she's on our committee.
Yes. Yeah, she's on, she was on the original committee when they did the clinics at the two schools. And then when they first asked for the student data for, for all of the schools, she conversed with Ms. Harrison about the, not only the mechanism, but what was gonna be in place service-wise. And then once we got that information, we decided to come to the board because it was an extension beyond what, you know, the, the original plan was set to place.
She didn't have any problem with the program?
I mean, not that I know of.
I've worked closely with Lydia. I've served as a medical director for seven programs at CDC and Roll.
Mrs. Rock? Okay. I see. Eleven years of experience at two schools, no problems. That's been brought here. I see need, all right, that's gonna help the students. I see resource that you all are going to offer. I see telehealth, where they don't have to actually walk in to the place where you can call them. Only if, back to if there is a need. I want to thank you, Dr. Wilson, for coming. I want to thank you, Mrs. Harrison, for coming. I want to thank you, Mrs. Paulette, who were in high school. I want to thank you for coming. And I'd like, I'd just like to call for the vote.
Well, first, you know, just next time, can we get this a little bit ahead of time? Because I do like reading all of this and.
Let me do it.
I understood so much more about what y'all are doing.
This is a paroxysm.
At the time that I was told it would be, because we spent about weeks. Next week we received it yesterday. We didn't know given the considerations of the limitations of the presentation if we'd even be able to present.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. LaSalle?
He, he has a question.
Mrs. Ford?
Well, he's watching me. I'm just wondering if, I, I like the presentation, basically for information that you gave. You say you provide help with the kids with math, things like that? No, you didn't say that?
No, ma'am. I said that a thing that has been identified, we're making a call, is that students are having problems with the distant learning. Some of them don't have access to laptops or tablets, so they're not completing. Those that do have access, the parents don't understand the coursework. And then some students, they don't have parental involvement and they don't understand. So one of the recommendations or the ask or the consideration. or the considerations is, we were wondering if you all maybe had information about a tutoring program that could be offered via distant learning. Again, while we'd love for someone to be included on the wellness initiative team so that they can hear what the needs are, and then they can allow us to know what resources you all have available. We're hoping this will be a collaboration with the school board and Tesh Action Clinic, just to serve the students.
I would like to have seen, heard all, all of your presentation, uh, ahead of time, like, like you said. So, we can see all the components before we give you permission. I mean, we may wanna add this, take this, but right now, you've been asking for blanket, um, permission, and we have various, I have various information about the questions that I had. Do you have any more questions, ma'am, that I can address?
You had, previously, I, I did a very detailed presentation to you all. And let me just say a few words, Mr. Taylor.
I, I would agree. I, I, I...
You know, I wanna, since I have the mic, you know, if I seem defensive or aggressive is because over thirty years ago, I came before the school board, and we proposed the first school-based clinic in the state. And we got turned down. I'm saying we, the students and the people of this parish got turned down for a service that could have greatly benefited them. So, what got delayed thirty years ago finally got to happen, happened eleven years ago. And I think that, you know, if you look at the track record, I presented, this is, I guess, the fifth or sixth time I presented this, and I get the same questions about what are we doing, that really, that disappoints me. That either you don't get the information or the inquisitiveness of, of visiting and seeing and talking to the folks that are the benefit. It's not punishing me as an individual. This is for the students, the citizens, the constituents that you represent. It's not about Tesh Action Clinic. It's the people that you represent that we're connecting to services. So, if I feel, if there's a sense of urgency in my mind, I think there is a sense of urgency because we've lost generation after generation, and we can't afford to do that anymore.
Mr. Folcard, you have something to say?
Yes, I wanna say something. I wanna say thanks to the program, our ability to initiate it. We didn't have as much trouble then, but we were dealing with a different times and different situations. We had other coordinators that believed in you because you projected something for us that helped our students. And I think you all done a good job because we have had open training, because you've been open. And, uh, so I would say thank you.
I'd just like to say this. As a member of the school board, when this program was at, uh, West St. Mary, B E B, and Rain Tree, even though I am particularly interested in the district that I work with, I still went, when you came about and said it was going to be included, uh, Rain Tree, I still went to Rain Tree and asked the principal to show me the area and what they were doing, and spoke to those people. So, to say that we don't know anything about this, we had the opportunity to go to West St. Mary and B E B. We've had the opportunity, just like I did, to go to Rain Tree to find out exactly what are they doing to those on the far west end, for me to know that this is something I would like. I don't have to go through this again. I've heard your presentation. I've gone there, and I've seen for myself. And that's why I said I called for the vote.
All right. We have a motion on the floor to expand the services for Tesh Action Clinic operating in our, in our schools. All in favor of that motion? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Nay? All right, the motion. All right, we have a roll call vote. We have a request for roll call vote. Mrs. Stewart, would you call the roll? Or, Dr. Bagwell, excuse me?
Mr. Folcard?
I'm voting for it.
Ms. Lockett?
Yes.
Mr. Alfred?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruck?
Definitely yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
No.
Ms. LaSalle?
No.
Mr. DeLotte?
Yes.
Mrs. Black?
Yes.
Mr. Barbier?
Yes.
Mr. Barret?
Yes.
And Mr. Taylor?
Oh.
We have eight yays and three nays. Motion passed.
All right, the motion carries. We'll move on.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item five, consideration of recommendation for non-renewal of administrative contract. Dr. Bagwell?
Based on the information provided to you prior to the board meeting, I'm recommending non-renewal of the administrative contract identified in your packets. I would refer you to the documents provided within the packets for details regarding reasons for this recommendation.
All right, we have a guest that would like to speak at this time.
Good evening, Mr. Taylor. I know that I'm allocated five minutes, uh, three minutes. I'm hoping that you could extend that to five minutes, please. Would you consider giving me a two-minute extension?
A little.
And also, am I allowed to pass these folders out to board members?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. You all know me. I'm a product of this school system. I've been a dedicated and loyal employee of this parish for the past twenty-six years. For the past fourteen years, I proudly live the number-two ranked school in this district. I am a longtime president of the St. Mary Parish Principals Association, and I am currently the St. Mary Parish High School Principal of the Year, a tremendous honor that I have held three times during my career. Tonight, I have been graciously given five minutes to speak to you about false, unproven, undocumented, and unsubstantiated claims and allegations. Five minutes to defend myself, my reputation, my career, my family. That, of course, is impossible. Therefore, I wish to give you some things to think about before you go into executive session, some things of which you might not be aware of, some things that I believe led us to be here this evening. Did you know that during the fall semester, before Christmas, two employees were dismissed wrongfully, in my opinion, from my school by C O C staff? One was terminated, and one was transferred. Both had secured legal counsel. Did you know that I was called into the C O C in January and told to come up with a reason to write a teacher up in relation to this case? Did you know that I refused to do so because I thought it was wrong? Did you know that the personnel director showed up in my office unannounced in February, closed the door, and told me once again that we have to come up with a reason to write this teacher up on the advice of the school board's attorney? I explained that we have no valid reason to write the teacher up. She then stated that the teacher had a picture of her own child on her phone, and that was a violation of board policy because her child was also a student in this system. I explained that that was not acceptable because everyone has pictures of their own children on their phones. Did you know that on February seventeenth, the personnel director called me and asked me to ask two teachers, the two teachers involved in this case, for their personal cell phone records? Yep, you guessed it. I refused to do so because I felt that it was unethical and possibly illegal. Did you know that the next morning, our superintendent showed up at my school? She was angry, and she told me to get the two teachers in the office so she could ask them for their personal cell phone records. She said she was pitch hitting because I had refused to do, to do it. Did you know she chastised me afterwards, telling me that I must do whatever she or anyone from her office tells me to do? Did you know that the following week, I was called to the superintendent's office, where I was written up for not following these questionable directives? To strengthen the write-up, they added things like I didn't return a phone call the same day, or I wasn't able to meet with them last summer, yeah, I said last summer, when I took my son camping. That is called piling on, adding a bunch of things to a weak or non-existent case to make it look more substantial. Remember that. There's much more to this story, but did you know that a false allegation supposedly from a decade ago popped up right before I was written up, right after I was written up? I didn't hear from the school board for five weeks. When I did hear back, the one allegation had grown to a ten-page document containing outrageous and unsubstantiated claims, things like I stole a cell phone from a teacher's locked classroom, we have cameras all throughout the building, and that I cursed at a teacher and threw a book at her during a faculty meeting. Remember what I said happens when someone has a weak or non-existent case that they can't prove? They pile on irrelevant items to make it look substantial. Did you know that I found out that Dr. Bagwell was assistant, when she was assistant superintendent, she and Mr. Boudreaux, the personnel director at that time, held a secret meeting at the M O C two or three years ago with many of the people listed on that document that you have in your hand? The purpose of the meeting was to come up with reasons to remove me from Morgan City High School. Do you know that Mr. Armada, the superintendent at the time, never knew that the secret meeting took place? Neither did I. I know that my time is almost up, but before I finish, I want to address the questionable and shoddy investigation and the report that you have all been provided. If these things were reported years ago, how come there is no documentation in existence? How come I was never questioned or notified of any of these events? They called people or found them on Facebook in Texas and Arkansas and Tennessee? Why couldn't they contact Mr. Armman, who was the personnel director at that time, to see if these things were ever in fact reported? It took me one phone call to find out he had never been contacted. How come some people who were interviewed and disputed these claims aren't mentioned in this report at all, and their statements are not listed? I went back and listened to the recording of the interviews. What is on that report is frequently inaccurate, and in terms of my responses, it is taken out of context. For example, where's my statement for the original allegation? I was interviewed for thirty minutes the first time, but there is no statement as to what I said for you to read? Since there's no documentation, no firsthand accounts, and no evidence for these wild allegations from years ago, investigators' impressions, quote-unquote, were used to determine findings based on accounts from what's called a corroborating witness. What is a corroborating witness, you might ask? Someone who has been told something by someone but has no true knowledge of the situation. Some people listed as corroborating witnesses on your document have been at the school for three years, but they were witnesses to the, to events that supposedly happened ten or fifteen years ago. How can that be? In fact, Dr. Bagwell is listed as a corroborating witness on at least four of the listed items, but she is also the one charged with making a decision in this case. That sounds like a conflict. I'll leave you this evening with an example that I used with Dr. Bagwell when I spoke to her last week concerning this matter. If someone comes to me or comes to you and tells us something that Dr. Bagwell did as a teacher thirty years ago, does that make us witnesses? Does that make us credible to discuss something that we weren't there to see, or does it just make us someone who has heard gossip or rumors? I want to thank you, and I hope you independently make a decision today based on a documented substantiated evidence, not hearsay or rumors. This is not about politics or who likes who or one another. This is about someone's career and reputation, mine.
Thank you, Joe, for being so generous. All right. What are the wishes of the board?
I move to accept superintendent's recommendation for non-renewal of the administrative contract.
I'll second.
All right, we have a second.
Wait, wait, wait. What was the motion?
To accept the recommendation of the administration.
Of the administrative contract.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Can I say something real quick? I like to make a motion if we go into executive session.
I agree.
Due to the sensitive nature of this matter?
I agree.
All right, we need a vote on that.
Second.
Uh, we have a second to that motion, to go into executive session.
We're going into...
We need to vote?
We're going into executive session, but it's already been, it's already been stated.
No, we still can go into executive session to speak about personnel matters. You second?
I second.
All right. All in favor of that motion? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
So, moved. We will, we're gonna go into executive session in this room so we can keep the, the social distancing spacing. We'll have to have the recorders turned off. We'll have to have the microphones turned off. Except board members and our legal advisor.
Brady, we're off.